All right, I'm going to call to order the special evening meeting for the Salem City Council for Wednesday, May 13th, 2015. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Here.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Benjamin?
Here.
Counselor Benards?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And we have, we need approval for our special meeting agenda. Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move a pres- uh, pres- approval of the special meeting agenda for May 13th, 2015.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benards to approve the special meeting agenda. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And do we have additions? Yes. Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion for additions?
I do, Madam Mayor. I move additions, additions, revision consisting of the only item on our agenda this evening.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benards to approve the addition to the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Thank you. We do have time for counsel and city manager comment. Does anyone have a comment this evening? Yes, Counselor Benjamin?
I watched that movie last night, Unbroken. It was great.
Unbroken. Last night? All right. Thank you. Other comments?
Can't be done.
All right.
There you go.
We're good.
I already booked.
And you had the book. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening? No one signed up for that. All right, then we're here to the consent calendar, which actually, I'm not certain if the consent calendar has anything on it. There is nothing on it.
I would not move the consent calendar, Madam Mayor.
So, yes, are you going to not move the, the non-consent calendar?
I'm not so.
All right. All those in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Yes, all right, thank you.
Okay.
We have no public hearing. We are at special orders of business, which is the reason that we are here together this evening for this special meeting of the Salem City Council. And it's my pleasure at this time to introduce, well, first of all, I will say that the purpose, of course, of this meeting is caused because we're doing a city manager search. And as you all know, our city manager, Lynda Norris, announced her retirement and then did in fact indeed retire at the end of March. And before that even began, that time, we began our search process. And if you'll remember, we as a council agreed that we would contract with a company that would guide the search process for us. And we did in fact contract with Waldron. And we have a representative from Waldron here, Heather Gantz, and she's the person who is guiding us in this process and putting together many of the materials and will actually be doing the more physical parts of the search process or the steps that we will be going through. So this evening, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Heather Gantz and also to introduce to you Mina Hansen, who is not a stranger to you as our human resources director. And she's going to talk a bit about the process and then Heather will guide us as well through the document that we need this evening to review and adopt. So, ladies?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Mina Hansen, the HR Director for the City of Salem. You may remember back on March 23rd, you adopted a process by which we would follow for moving forward with the selection of a new city manager. A subcommittee of your peers was selected to work on this profile that we've developed. And you probably all have been in contact with Heather. I think everybody spoke with Heather to get their feedback on what the ideal candidate would be. We've taken all of that information and coalesced it into a beautiful flyer for an announcement and a recruitment, which I believe you have. And I'll let Heather talk about some of the high points of the, of the profile and some of the things she heard from you and from the stakeholders she interviewed.
Excellent. So, thank you.
Welcome.
We, thank you. We, as you well know, I interviewed all of you and spent some time with the council as well as all of the department directors and then a group of identified stakeholders, business community members, to asking everyone the similar questions, what they were looking for, some priorities that the city manager, along with the council, as well as staff, would take upon and try and tackle over the next several years. All of that information was then kind of brought together in common themes and really consistent information. That information was then presented to the selection committee and then subsequently put into the document that you have in front of you, which we refer to as a position profile. It's very detailed in nature, as you can plainly see, information highlighting the city itself, showcasing potential candidates, what the city is like and the structure of the city, so budget size, staff size, departments information. We highlighted that the Urban Renewal Agency, as well as the Housing Authority, the airports, things of that nature, that a potential manager would be interested in. And then we get into the kind of nuts and bolts of the position, a detailed description about what this person is responsible for, the issue or priority section, which is those short and long-term opportunities. Those were the consistent things that I heard, not only from the council and the staff, but a lot of the community stakeholders that I spoke with as well. And then the ideal candidate section is really more about traits and characteristics, helping the candidates, potential candidates understand cultural fit, a little bit more about a good potential. Some skill sets are in there, but really about what would be a good fit for the city of Salem. And then we have a qualification section, minimum qualification section, degree information, as well as some skill sets that we would, I'd like this person to have coming into the position. All collected in about seven pages of information. So tonight, we would love for you to provide input, comments, and then eventually, ultimately, we need to approve the documents and/or changes if, if there are any.
So, we really, in order to stay on our timeline, which is one of the documents that was sent out to you with the special meeting, in order to stay on our timeline, we are looking for approval tonight of the profile and so that we can move forward and get it posted on Monday. We figure based on our timeline, if we are able to post within the next week, we can still fill this position by mid-September to early October, have someone onboard. The process of vetting a candidate takes a while and we have to advertise and we'll have summer vacations in there and getting people in for interviews and the whole process. So we're really looking at sometime in September at the earliest for a fill date, if we can get posted in the next week or so.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to just remind everyone that the subcommittee is composed of four people from council, Chuck Bennett, Brad Nanki, Steve McCoyd, and myself. And so it may be that they would like to share any of the thoughts or direct, or direct observations, since we did have a chance to go through this document on Monday. And of course, we were working with, with Heather and Mina early on to really bring together many of these key points for the position description, as well as the skills and the experience that we were looking for. But I did see some hands, and so I want to answer those, and then we'll go back to the people on the committee. I saw Brad, excuse me, Warren Benards, Counselor Benards first, and then Counselor Lewis.
Thank you. You actually answered a couple of questions, who was on the committee. What I wanted to also hear was, in the document, which I have read earlier today, what were the sentiment of your committee meeting? Are they reflected in here? Are there any sort of dissent or difference at all of what's in here?
The only, probably the only one is that it's a picture of the planning commission.
I saw that.
Yeah, they look better. Yeah, I know, this is one of those, a correct answer can be, get over yourself, but it isn't.
Well, sometimes, as we just went through the blue ribbon committee, you know, you always wanted to know, was there something that they didn't put in that you had talked about? It sounds, I'm ready to move to the City of Salem, frankly, it just sounds wonderful and the pictures are great. So I think what'll happen by them talking, we'll probably answer the question that I'm asking for.
Okay, great. Counselor Lewis?
Comment first? The picture is the planning commission. I was president and there that night, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you. But my question is Heather, and it may be odd, but you've done this before, so my guess is that there have been times where you've gone through this process and you've told yourself, okay, these guys got together and they all came up with the same answers and I'm being fooled. There have been other times where you've, you've talked to everybody and you've thought to yourself, these people are all from different planets. There's no connection at all. And then the gamut is in between. I'm just curious, as you've gone through the process here, do you feel as though there's a real solid connection between what you've heard enough that you feel real comfortable that there is a consistency with what you heard and what you see in front of us now?
Absolutely. Yes, very much so. The, and the selection committee has some additional information, but we, I put together a document that outlined the consistency and common themes from each of the groups, so the department directors as a whole, the stakeholder group, as well as the council group. And there was consistency amongst those three individual groups as a whole. So there, yes, there are individual items, but overall, there was a tremendous amount of consistency, which is extremely beneficial to the recruiting process, of course. It's very important that everyone is on the same page from the beginning of the process because when we circle back around at the end and we're all in agreement about what we looked for from the beginning, it makes the selection process that much more valuable and validated.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I just had a chance to read this when I got here tonight, so I have a comment and a question then. And my comment is that over 20% of the Salem community is Latino. And I didn't see, maybe there is something in there, but I didn't see anything in there that discussed that fact. And then I also think a quality that the, might be helpful in a new city manager is demonstrated ability to work with the minority groups. And if this person could speak Spanish, I'd be, I'd be head over heels. But I think that's something that ought to be in there, the makeup of the community.
You're absolutely right on, and I'm embarrassed that I didn't see it and think of it myself. Thank you for bringing that.
Yeah.
That really is significant.
Thank you, Mayor. Then my question is, I'm looking at the priorities and opportunities. Are those in order or are they just generally or, because I look at that and I could see a different order, and I don't know if it makes much difference unless people, unless you're saying this is the order, unless people looking, that they're going to think this is their priority from the top going down. And maybe the committee can answer that question.
So, I don't think that we, Heather and I, ordered them in a particular order, and we didn't ask the committee to order them. And keep in mind that this is just for the candidate to have an idea of what the priorities might be. Absolutely, after the person comes onboard, you are going to set the priorities and the order. So, to answer your question, we didn't order them.
Okay. I mean, because I'm looking at it, I look at down toward the bottom, quickly establish self and, establish self and develop positive relationship, that, that probably is the first thing you got to do. And the same is true with build strong relationship and partnerships, and the same is true, partner with the mayor, city council staff. Those three at the bottom, to me, are the ones that, in terms of how quickly they're done, that's, those three are the most important things.
So we have two options there. We could order them and/or we could put a caveat there that is, you know, in no particular order.
Either way would be fine with me. It probably would be easier to do the latter because it's going to, we're going to have a lot of time discussing if we want to order seven, seven items there. But I think those three at the bottom, potentially, maybe we have agreement that they could go on the top if we're going to do otherwise. I don't have much concern about, you know, items four, five, six, and seven, the ones on the top.
I think that's, that's a good point, Counselor Anderson, and it may be that tonight we'll be adding some things to that list as well.
Sure.
Too, thank you. Let's see, I saw Counselor Benards and then Counselor McCoyd.
Real quick comment in reference to what Counselor Anderson had spoke about, the six and seven, or the last two is what I'm saying, are pretty similar to one another. In fact, the strong relationships with the mayor and city council on both of them and so forth, I can see more delineation between one being with the council and the mayor, and the other one being with the community. Just a thought. It's wordsmithy and I don't want to get into that, but it's just a thought.
Counselor McCoyd?
To Counselor Anderson's point, I would rather have some disclaimer saying, here they are in no particular order. I mean, I could make the argument, long-term, I think the first two are more important than the three short-term ones you're focused on. But I think we went, we spent quite a bit of time on that list and how we did it and whether we should order it and what the order would be, and finally just said, okay, let's leave them there, put some disclaimer on it and move on.
Good. Counselor Anderson?
That's fine with me. If there's a disclaimer there that says these are in no particular order, then I'm fine with that.
Okay, good. Counselor Benjamin?
Is it fair to put something in there? They must reside in Salem.
That's a charter requirement.
Oh, it is? Okay, my bad. Thank you.
Maybe we should indicate, that's a good question. Maybe we should indicate that in here, that it is a charter requirement, so that there's just, you know, it's just one more thing that is out there very clear and simple.
And what I would say to that is, when we get our candidates and bring them in for interviews, we can discuss that with them. I would hate to add it to the profile and have somebody think that means they have to live in Salem right now, because that's certainly not what we're trying to say.
Well, we could word it, though, couldn't we? I mean, I'm aware of another search where one of the candidates brought into town, wasn't told, bold-faced, a certain fact, and suddenly it's become the fly in the ointment in the, in that negotiation. So I'd like this document to be as clear as we can about facts that will help a person decide yea or nay, or to clearly understand the priority that we have about that matter. Other questions or comments regarding the document or the process? Counselor Benards, followed by Counselor Nanki?
Just a quick clarification, the salary range, 190 to 220, where did that stand?
I'm sorry, what?
The salary ranges between 190 and 220, is that about where we left with city manager?
No.
And that's because I thought it was up, much higher than what we had had, but we have higher expectations as well.
So, I'll speak to it and then maybe perhaps the subcommittee members can speak to it. So we did a, we asked Heather to do a salary survey of like-sized cities with a similar structure on the West Coast. We, we didn't want to look beyond, say, Boise. And what we found is that on 7-1, the city manager pay that you had authorized is to go to 175,947. That puts us significantly below the market for like-sized cities in like-sized setups with this kind of a form of government. So, we presented that information to count, to the subcommittee, and it was agreed that we should present it at a 190 to 220 in order to be competitive. Now, keep in mind, this is not like our other employees, there's no steps, this is just a market range amount, and if you find a candidate, you can select to pay them anywhere in that range or not.
Well, the fact that it's listed there and the fact that you do have this data backing it up means that when somebody comes to me and says, you're paying them a six-digit figure, a high six-digit figure for our community, are you sure that we have the money to do that and you can say, well, this is what we have to compete against? And I like that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Counselor McCoyd?
Yeah, we just, we spent quite a bit of time on this, and the range was pretty interesting. I mean, there were smaller cities, much smaller cities, making more money than our city manager was making. So it was interesting when you really got to look at it, but it was more, we wanted to be competitive coming out and not have people go, well, I'm not going to even apply if that's the salary range. We wanted to make sure we had folks not getting, you know, turned off by too lower a pay.
Excuse me, Counselor Benjamin?
Well, I understand the matrix of how to come up with a pay scale and stuff, but it only takes a few municipalities that are about our size and structure to say, and they may have the money to do it, a higher salary range, and then we're kind of roped into, well, we got to be competitive. Well, there's only one city manager in this city. And there's a lot of other cities, but how many other city managers, how many times does this position come up in this region? You know, so it's like if somebody wants to be a city manager, you know, that, that, what they're going to get paid is not going to be the turnoff. They're going to get paid a lot of money. So, I'm just throwing that out there.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That and the fact that a lot of cities our size would have two deputy city managers and we do not, just as a cost comparator inside the city manager's office. I wanted to go back to city government. And just to speak about it, we went through all of these without the pretty pictures on Monday. And yeah, it looked wonderful when I opened up today, I was like, oh, cool. But there was a lot of things that were taken directly off of previous documentation of the city that were not necessarily worded the most wonderfully, and so we gave input on modifying those out. And in specific, I still have an issue with one of those.
Okay.
Second paragraph under city government, third line from the "and" starts, in addition, the council appoints a group of stakeholder representatives to advise them on specific issues of interest to the community. Sounds like there's one stakeholder group. And if we just went, appoints groups of stakeholder representatives and make that plural so that...
From time to time, the council appoints a group to advise them.
Because if we have an issue, then we, we form a stakeholder group that we want to, but this one sounds like there is a group that will advise us on all those, kind of like a planning commissioner or something, and I just...
Counselor Anderson?
I'm sorry, are you done, Counselor?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we had clarification on that, because it's misleading as I read it, and it may mislead someone else.
I'm looking at the city government thing too, and I think it might be helpful to indicate that the counselors are elected on a nonpartisan basis.
I think that's a good point, and that we're all volunteers. Did we say that in there?
No, we did not.
Okay.
No. I mean, clearly, that, you know, it's, that's a whole different dynamic, being volunteer, nonpartisan, then paid, party representatives.
Very true.
Which is why we're so wonderful.
Yeah, well, that goes without saying. But you can say it.
Okay, other thoughts or comments?
Well, seeing none. Counselor Nanki, shall we, oh, did you have?
My other thing was, in reference to the picture, anybody just want to keep it, this is the...
Oh, no, we don't, we don't want the picture of the planning commission. You'll, you'll change that, won't you?
If we could replace any of the pictures, we would like...
And I would like it taken from the other side of the council chambers, not from the backside of the council chambers.
Right. Well, I'm sure, I just don't think we should put a picture of the planning commission members in there when we're trying to represent this.
We can change any of the pictures. Courtney, with the city provided me with a great kind of grouping of pictures, and we select based on size and how they fit into the document, but we can absolutely change any of them as you would like.
Cool. Well, yeah, because this shows two empty chairs, which those, you know, volunteer, non-paid counselors just didn't feel like showing up that night.
We'll change the picture out.
One other question that I might have, it talked about a budget of $522.8 million. We actually have, what would you say, two different kind of budgets that we work with?
Well, we have a lot of different, we have many, several different funds that make up the budget. I would defer to our city manager, do you have a way that you think is better to describe our financial, the depth of which the city manager is responsible for?
Maybe the total budget as opposed to budget, because we really don't have a $500 million budget.
A city manager of similar type city will know exactly what that means.
Yeah. That is a total budget. Total seems the appropriate word in front of it.
And if I can add on to that, we had a much longer piece in the, in the draft, and you shortened that up very nicely.
You did.
All right. Other thoughts, comments? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to accept this document and to ask our city ma, our city human resources director and Heather Glance and Waldron to proceed with the next steps in the process.
I would so move as amended on the floor this evening.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Dickey, to adopt the, or approve the document as presented this evening with the additions and corrections that we have requested. Is there discussion? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I appreciate the amendments made on the floor language from Counselor Nanki, and I presume we, will we see this again, or will it go out on Monday before another council meeting? I mean, I'm, I'm happy, you know, I think you, we, you know, this is a good document to begin with, and then we've given you the additions that I have full faith that you'll be able to put it in. So I suspect we won't see it before it goes out, it'll just go out.
The plan was that you would not see it again. It will just go out. And we need to do that to stay on the timeline, otherwise we'll...
I understand, I understand. The Latino community is the only thing that, I know you put that in there, and I don't, you'll figure out where it goes and how it goes.
The other thing that was brought to my attention that we did not discuss in this forum was that the number of acres of parkland is off by a couple hundred, so I'll make that adjustment. I just wanted to make note of that in a formal capacity.
Only adjusted if it's off the higher, yeah.
Yes, it's higher. Yeah.
Right, how many miles a trip.
Right, right.
So I will make that adjustment as well. I just wanted to make sure it was noted.
Yeah. Yeah, I have a couple of comments on the pictures too that I could share with you, and I think we could show a picture of one of our parks as opposed to the Willamette University campus, which is a beautiful campus, but it's really not our domain, so there's that. I would like to see, I would like to see the document before it goes out. And I can certainly, we can do it through email, or I'm here, so we can, I would like to, and I would particularly like to see the wording that we come up with with regard to how we describe our international community. So, do that. And someone else, other hand up, Counselor Benars?
I just wanted to compliment the four members of the committee that worked hard on this. I know that this is literally, with the help of hired and our staff, is really is the start of an extremely important step that this community, this council, and the larger part of this community has to take. And I'm impressed by what's here, I'm impressed by what we're going to come up with. We still have months of work in front of us, or you have, I guess, months of work in front of you as a committee, I think, as we continue down this road. I just want to say thank you for putting in the time and effort into this whole thing.
Thank you. And it really is all of us that need to be cognizant every step of the way. This is the biggest decision I think we'll make, as long as any of us are ever on this council. So it's serious work, and I appreciate everybody's intentions and hard work. It's been wonderful so far with the committee, how attentive and prepared people have been, and that's been heartwarming to me. I also want to note that I really appreciate the, that this process is very open to the community. This is a public meeting, we're, we're recording it, and it's very important to... This is a public meeting, we're recording it, and it's very important to me that this document is publicly available. And so as people may have questions, I'm happy to answer questions or have anyone directed to anybody else on the committee. I think the more communication we have with the public, the better they will feel connected to the process and feel that we're hiring a city manager for all of the city. So I'm pleased about the way this process is going. Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam. Just that I'm fine with just having it emailed as we send it out to whomever else, just so that we have it as it's being distributed to the world in case somebody asks. Yeah, it's like, well, I don't know, I haven't seen the final version. It doesn't really sound so good.
Yeah.
Good.
Once it's been finalized, I'll distribute to everyone.
And council members, would you like hard copies? We will be sending the final version down to the print shop to make glossy hard copies. Would you like a stock of hard copies?
That would be great.
I think that's a great idea.
I'll make sure that we put some, in case you know somebody you would like to hand it out to. Recruitment's all about, you know, outreach, so please, once you get it, let's begin our outreach.
Excellent.
Excellent. Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
We do.
We will call for the question. All those in favor of receiving this document and approving it for our next step of the process?
As amended.
As amended.
On the floor.
That's right. All in favor, the motion signified by saying aye. Aye opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. We have no further business to come before this body tonight and this meeting is adjourned.